Thank you and welcome to the Wednesday, June 6, 2012, meeting of the East Hampton City Council. Can I have a roll call, please?
Justin Cobb.
Present.
Donald Psychowski.
Present.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Daniel Hagan.
Present.
Joseph McCoy.
Here.
Chester Ogalewicz Jr.
Present.
Daniel Riss.
Here.
Joy Winnie.
Here.
Ethaniel Ziegler.
Present.
Thank you. Can I have approval, a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Are there any amendments to the minutes? Hearing none. Do I have all those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or extensions?
One objection, I wasn't here for the last meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda is our public speak time. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the council on any issue that's currently not on our agenda, our public hearing agenda, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address. We'd be glad to hear from you.
Are we talking to me?
No, general audience.
I don't have a particular issue to talk with the council about. Thank you.
So that said, seeing none, we'll move on to communications from elected officials and boards of the committee. I believe Council McCoy has a notice to provide us.
Yes, thank you very much. The Bears are back. It's very exciting. The Saturday is the kickoff for the Bear Fest. It will start at 2:00 PM at the public parking lot right across from Amy's. There'll be the official unveiling of one of the Bears and the rest of them will be around town. Then there'll be a parade down to the parking lot behind East Hampton Savings Bank where there'll be more celebration, refreshments, food. So this was a phenomenal event last time we did this, so please make sure you attend this Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Communications.
Mr. President, don't have anything?
Thank you. That said, we'll go to reports of standing committees. Rules and Government Relations, Councilor Riss.
Yes, Mr. President, I do have a report. The Rules Committee met and discussed Council Psychowski's request to discount sewer charges this summer. The request, as you know, must be in the form of a resolution as we have no authority over the Board of Public Works. The committee met and discussed it and felt that, for two reasons, that we were going to ask that this be removed from the council's agenda without prejudice. Number one, there was no supporting documentation, namely as to how we would pay, direct the BPW to pay for this discount or what areas might be considered with regard to personnel or the budget or anything like that or historical use of water such as those documents. Also, the committee had a consensus that if individual counselors felt strongly about this, that their best mode would be to go to the Board of Public Works directly because they have the authority. On a personal note, I found that this particular request would be extremely difficult for the Board of Public Works to deal with, mainly because the enterprise budget with no retained earnings, which is their savings account, primarily because if you look at this year's budget, the retained earnings are being used for operational expenses, which would be a primary way if there was a large amount of retained earnings perhaps to pay for a discount. It would mean either layoffs, which they cannot afford, they're already down personnel in both sewer, I believe, in wastewater and in the water department, or they would have to raise the rates in the fall to make up for it, so the discount would be negligent. But that's a personal note, there was no consensus from the committee on that. So I'll take questions before I make a motion.
Council Psychowski.
Well, I could have supported, I wouldn't have any documentation, but I had certain ways that we could do this or it wouldn't have cost the town any money, but since you had the meeting, I was ill and I didn't know about it. If you want to go that way, every time you try to do something here for the taxpayers in this town, there's always a reason we can't do it. For the simple reason, if we're taking $500,000 a year on our enterprise fund to balance our budget that we're going to be voting on tonight, there's no reason in the world that we can't give a discount just on the water. I'm also talking about the sewer, the sewer, I was talking about the sewer rates. I wasn't talking about the water. You could do it with averages. It doesn't, it doesn't take much figuring out how to do that without much cost. It'd be a little bit of cost, but not much. It would have been a wash for the community. And the thing of it is, when I brought this up, we were in a very dry season, people were going to need an awful lot of water. People are gardening more. We, we're here to help people, not to take. That's the end of what I got to say.
Any other councils have any questions for Councilor Riss or comments?
I therefore move that the, that the city council remove this request for the BPW to offer a discount on summer sewer charges from the city council Rules Committee's agenda without prejudice.
Second. We have a motion on the table that's been made and seconded to remove this request to offer a request from the BPW to offer a discount on summer sewer charges. Are there any further questions on this motion?
I just have one thing to say. I will be going in alone to talk to the BPW. I'm not afraid to go in alone. But I thought it'd be nice if I had some support from the board. I will go alone, no problem. And I will, and I'll try to prove my case to them, but I know how this town runs. I'm not going to get anywhere, but I'm going to try. Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Hagan.
Just one comment by, no prejudice, if Councilor Psychowski comes up with some solutions after talking to the Board of Public Works, he would be free to bring it back.
That's correct.
I just wanted to, as it means.
With the word no prejudice, it means that our rules don't apply because we are not taking any action. We're simply removing it from the agenda. If action occurred such as we said no or.
So he couldn't bring it back if he.
He can bring it back if he has further evidence of need and, I mean, or documentation, whatever.
I just wanted to note that I was thinking that there was some legs to this proposal and if there was an opportunity to investigate it more, but we evidently, without prejudice, was going to allow him to come back with it. Okay, any further comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
No.
Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Councilor Riss?
Yes, Mr. President, the Rules Committee will meet on the 20th of this month at 6:00 PM on Room 1 to deal with the request from Personnel Director for Chapter 32B. This is an important healthcare issue related to the mayor's authority and collective bargaining. I urge counselors to read up on it and to attend. Also, we will be dealing with the administrative code request, which we will be getting this evening under new business. Thank you, that's all.
Councilor Hagan.
Finance, I'll announce the next meeting. It'll be on a Monday, June 18th, at 6 o'clock in Room 1. We took up the, or at least started to take up the override question at our last subcommittee meeting. We had a joint meeting with the school committee and took a lot of public input and we hope to conclude that on the 18th. We also hope to take up that evening, if there's time, the $300,000 CPA funding request for Riverside Industry Windows. So given that, I would like to request the form of a motion first. I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing for a request from the school committee for an override question on the November 12 ballot.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
This for July?
Did you set a date?
July 11, July 11.
We have a motion on the table to set a public hearing for the supplemental appropriation of $300,000 from CPA funds for Riverside Window Replacement Project for our meeting on the 11th at 6:15 in these chambers. Any further questions on the motion?
And also the override be placed on the ballot.
Okay, and also the override question to be placed on the ballot. Thank you for the correction. Okay, that said, any further questions on this, these motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions, any objections? Okay, motion passes.
That concludes Finance.
Thank you. Public Safety, Councilor McCoy.
No report tonight.
Thank you. Councilor Winnie, appointments?
Yes, thank you. We met tonight at quarter of six in the chambers and we have one name submitted to us for tonight for the Housing Partnership Committee. The name brought up to us by the mayor is Alexis Breton Eiger for the Housing Partnership with her term of expiration of December 31, 2014. It was unanimous, three to zero, that this appointment be brought forth to city council for a vote. So with that being said, I'll make the motion that we appoint Alexis Breton Eiger to Housing Partnership Committee for December 31, 2014, as expiration of appointment.
Second.
We have a motion on the table and that's been seconded to recommend Alexis Breton Eiger to the Housing Partnership Committee. Any further questions for the counselor on this motion before we take a vote? Councilor Hagan.
I don't have a question, I do have a comment. She's currently also a member of the CPA committee and I've worked with her at a couple of meetings. I think she'd be a very good appoint.
Thank you. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or extensions? Seeing none, motion passes.
Thank you, that's all that I have for tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ordinance, Councilor Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would first like to announce our next meeting, which is going to be June 20th at 6:00 PM. I believe in one of the basement rooms, which everyone is open. So that being said, oh, and at that meeting, we're going to be finishing up looking at the biking ordinance and we're also going to be looking at Councilor Psychowski's request for the over $55 housing bonus and stretch code. I did want to just move to set a public hearing for our next meeting for the revisions of Chapter 3 bicycles at 6:15 in these chambers. Need a second?
Second.
Thanks.
Thank you. We have a motion on the table to set a public hearing to amend the city ordinances, Chapter 3 bicycles at, on our next meeting, July 11, 2012, at 6:15 in these chambers. Any further comments or questions of the counselor on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or extensions? Hearing none, motion passes. Council Derby, you still have the floor.
That concludes my report.
There are a couple items here that are getting close that may need some extensions. The 619.
That should.
That's going to be until 7/11?
7/11, yeah, okay. I guess I'll request a 60-day extension on the review of the special permitting process.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to recommend a 60-day extension on the special permitting process request. Any further comments on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or extensions? None. Council Derby, still has the floor.
And that concludes my report now.
Thank you. Councilor Psychowski, property?
No business this week. We're out of business. No report.
Thank you very much. I got a quick couple minutes to do the new business. Would you like to handle that right now? Councilor Riss?
Yes, I'll make a motion to move the request for to accept Administrative Code 12, the East Hampton Library Services Contract, to the Rules and Government Relations Committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on, that's been made and seconded to recommend that the request to accept Administrative Code for the East Hampton Library Services Contract be moved to Rules for consideration review. Any further comments or questions on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or extensions? Motion passes. With that said, I'll take a motion to move into public hearing.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion to move into public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objections or extensions? Hearing none. I'm going to allow Council Derby to go first, given the budget is a little, can get a little lengthy. Council Derby, you have the floor.
So we have a couple amendments to the pay plan, Exhibit A. And basically, I'll start with the inspectors, the principal clerk from the inspector's office in the Health Department first. These were positions that were omitted from the pay plan and there are clerical positions that were part of the planning department. And when the jobs changed, the descriptions were broken down and in that process, those two positions were inadvertently omitted from the pay plan. And so those two were the principal clerk from the inspector's office, which is a grade five, and the principal clerk from the Health Department, which is a grade five. So the request is to reinstate those positions into the pay plan at grade five. Does anybody have any questions before?
Any questions for the council? Does the public have anything?
Just one.
I'm going to let the public speak first.
Oh, okay.
Just, given this is a public hearing, does the public have anything they'd like to come up and talk to the council ball? Please step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the site. Hearing none, Councilor Hagan.
Just one quick question, Councilor. This is just a omission, is, there's no change in pay?
As far as I know, there's no change in pay. It's just, they were omitted. Yes.
Okay. One question, the vote of the committee was?
Well, the, the committee never took a formal vote on, on this particular issue because Don wasn't there and after Nathan and I discussed it, we didn't, we decided we were going to wait for Don and then that didn't happen. However, I can say that the vote, had it been taken, would have been two to zero, but it wasn't official.
Well, that's, that's actually okay.
Okay.
So it's up to the city council. We basically have, we basically don't have a recommendation from the council. We do have a report from the committee, but we do have a report.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions or comments for the counselor on these? That said.
Okay, so I would like to move to include the following positions into Exhibit A, Classification Plan at Grade 5. 5, Principal Clerk Inspector's Office and Principal Clerk Health Department.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion that's been made and seconded to include the following positions into Exhibit A, Classification Plan at Grade 5, Principal Clerk Inspector's Office and Principal Clerk Health Department. Are there any further questions or comments on this motion? That said, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or extensions?
Extension.
One extension.
Okay, so the next one we have is again to amend Exhibit A and this one is to include a public health nurse position at grade nine. And Jackie Duda's here, so maybe I can let her speak to some of this, but basically, we've been sharing through a grant, a public health nurse with Northampton. That grant has come to an end and we still need the services of a public health nurse and it's about 10 hours per week, the position. And this, actually putting this in the pay plan at grade nine is comparable to the cost that we were paying previously. Actually, it's going to save us some money. Not a huge amount of money, but it is going to save some money. So basically, what we're doing is we're going to be, instead of splitting it with Northampton, we're going to have our own public health nurse at 10 hours a week at grade nine. And so we'll be continuing our services, save a little money. We're just not going to be sharing her with Northampton anymore.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the counselor or we do have some technical expertise you need? Council Winnie?
Did Northampton give any reason why they didn't approach us or why they went into collaboration with Amherst as opposed to continuing our collaboration?
They didn't, they, Northampton didn't give us any reason. They did inform us that they were going to be joining Amherst in a partnership and wanted to discontinue partnership that we were, we were enjoying. I think part of it is tied to the fact that the individual who is currently serving as the public health nurse in East Hampton and Northampton is retiring and so we are anticipating that individual may end up continuing to work for us.
Any questions for, any of our technical experts here? That said, this is a public hearing. If there's any members of the public who would like to come forward and speak on this issue, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Jackie Duda and I'm your health agent in town and I just got up here so I could introduce myself to all of you. I've been looking for an opportunity to come to a council meeting so I could introduce myself and say hello. I waited until now because now is a good opportunity since we're talking about a nurse and also I needed to know a little about the job before I got up here and had you asking me questions. So I know a little about the job now. The, we are anticipating that the nurse we've been working with here in East Hampton for several years will, will apply for the job once we post it and we will be saving about a little under $5,000 because we're paying an overhead to Northampton. In addition to this arrangement they're working out with Amherst, Northampton is also sharing other people with Amherst. They've been sharing inspectors and now the public health nurse is going to be shared with Amherst. So this is a kind of a design concept. The two larger communities are coupling their resources in many other ways and apparently we're not part of that. So I'm lucky that we're going to be able to possibly keep the same person if she's rehired and at a, at a lower cost and have some nice continuity in that service. And everything the mayor said and Salem said are accurate.
Just.
Council McCoy.
Clarify, what actually is her job? What does she do?
Well, she has the responsibility for fulfilling all of the public health nurse duties and those are immunizations, responding to any public health medical condition that's reported to us by a person, of a person in the community and following up on that. Very good and the most expensive example is tuberculosis. And in every community has somebody that tests positive for TB and that puts into play a whole range of public health regulations, procedures and protocols that we have to follow. We have to hire an RN to do that. Paperwork, follow-up visits, direct observation therapy, which means distrib, literally distributing the medicine to you and watching you take it maybe once, twice or three times a day depending on the particular level of the illness. So TB is a good one because everybody understands it, but there are also other communicable diseases or non-communicable diseases that come through us through a medical database that we share with the public health at the state level. They report to us that someone in the community has a positive diagnosis for something and we're required to follow up on it. Make sure that that person, for instance, isn't a food handler. If they are, there are protocols for restraining that person or restricting that person from handling food. There's stuff involved with their employer and it goes on and on and on. So having a public health nurse even on a part-time basis in a community this size is essential and very valuable. And we're lucky to have the one we have because she has broad experience and she's very nice. Nice to get along.
Okay, before we go on, I want to ask that, this is again like the previous one, this is a coming to the council with no recommendation from the committee?
It's same. It was, this one, this one.
We did have the opportunity to check in with the public health nurse and ask very similar questions too and get a number of our questions answered on whether or not. You know, I initially had concerns whether this was a position that was absolutely necessary and again, it was the, the tracking of the communicable diseases or people moving in from other countries and it was very clear, emergency planning for things like the avians, well, whatever, at this point. But while there was no official vote, again, I believe it was a strong consensus that there was a two to one.
Council Winnie.
No, I just want to say I've known Trish for years now, working in Northampton for the last seven years, 11 years. She's been help, the, the nurse over there and she's given me many flu shots. So, yeah, she's definitely an asset and to keep her around, to keep her here in Northampton would definitely be a good asset for us, so yes.
Council Hagan.
Just a quick, I know you're relatively new, Jackie, but you feel the 10 hours is adequate? I mean, is it?
Yes, I do.
You feel?
Okay, any more questions or comments? I asked the public if they'd like to go up and speak. She came, so Council Derby, it's yours.
Yeah, I'd like to move to amend Exhibit A, Classification Play, Pay Plan at Grade 9 to include the public health nurse position.
Second.
We have a motion that's been made seconded to amend Exhibit A to include public health nurse position at grade 9. Any further comments or questions on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or extensions? None, motion passes. Okay, that said, could I, I will. It's all yours, Council Derby.
Guess we'll open a public hearing on the proposed FY 13 budget. Just as a couple of general comments, the Finance Subcommittee met over three evenings and went over the budget line by line to the mayor and the finance director. We also had many of the department heads present when we were discussing the different budget sections that pertained to them. Did recommend approval of the mayor's budget at the end by a three to zero vote on each section and I just want to emphasize again, as, as been stated many times, that the council is only able to cut a budget and not to, not allowed to recommend that increases or additions to the budget. So with that, I'd open it up to the public or whatever the chair deems appropriate.
Okay, well, we'll open up to the public then. This is a public hearing. If anybody here in the public would like to step forward and come to the podium and address the council on the issue of the fiscal year 2013 budget, please do so. State your name and address for the record. Seeing none, Council Hagan, you want to start with?
I guess we're going to do it section by section. We'll start with Section 1. I'll read the motion. Section 1, General Government, I move that the city raise, vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,543, excuse me, $1,543,425.34 for the various departments listed under Section 1, General Government and the amounts listed in the right-hand column of the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations and that the sum of $1,543,425.34 for General Government, the amount of $75,575.30 be transferred from the enterprise revenue specifically as follows. Charges for Water Enterprise, city auditor, $6,604.20. Audit of financial reports, $750.20. Telephone expense account, $1,528.40. Assessor Personal Services, $3,173.14. Treasurer, $8,205.47. Computer Personnel Services, $4,342.30. Computer expense, $550. Collector Personnel Services, $3,471.38. Personnel Department, $6,186.89 for a total of $34,811.71 that would be charged for Water Enterprise. The following would be charged from Sewer Enterprise, city auditor, $6,604.20. Audit of financial reports, $750.20. Telephone expense account, $1,549.65. Assessor Personal Serv, Personnel Services, $3,173.14. Treasurer, $8,205.47. Computer Personnel Services, $4,342.30. Computer expense, $550. Collector Personnel Services, $3,471.38. And Personnel Department, $12,117.52 for a total of $40,763.59 from the Sewer Enterprise. And further, that the amount of $2,000 listed under Item 1712 of the Conservation Services, the sum of $2,000 be transferred from Conservation Commission revolving fund and the amount of $1,465,850.40 be appropriated from general taxation as recommended by the mayor and the finance committee.
Second.
We have a motion on the table for Section 1, General Government, to recommend the appropriation from the mayor and the finance committee of $1,543,425.34 as presented tonight. Are there any questions or comments from the counselor or the mayor?
The mayor can't.
We have a motion on the table, mayor can't. Thanks for the correction. That said, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any objections or extensions? Hearing none, motion passes. Council Hagan.
Counselor. Just to recommend, before you read the motion, if the mayor wants to speak to them.
Yeah, I got that.
Thank you.
Section 2, Public Safety, again, in public with the mayor. Any comments on public safety? Any questions?
Any other counselors have any questions? Okay, hearing none?
Hearing none, I'll make the following motion.
Let's let the public speak to it, if the public wants to speak to this. Okay, you're on. We'll do it section by section.
Yep. I move that the city raise and appropriate the sum of $4,701,307.20 for the various departments listed under Section 2, Public Safety and that the amounts listed in the right-hand column of the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations and the amount of $4,701,307.20 be appropriated from general sa, taxation as recommended by the mayor and the. from general taxation as recommended by the mayor and the finance subcommittee. Second.
We have a motion that's been made and seconded to, for Section Two, Public Safety, to recommend the appropriation of $4,701,307.20 as recommended by the mayor and the finance committee. Are there any further questions or comments on this motion? There are none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes.
Third section is Schools. Again, as Counsel Cobb has indicated, if anyone wants to speak, the mayor on this, on schools or the public, I guess.
The public would like to come up and speak to this issue? Please do so. Kate, you're on.
I'll make the following motion. I move that the city raise and appropriate the sum of $15,504,000 for the various departments listed under Section Three, Schools. And that the amounts listed in the right-hand column of the mayor's report, excuse me, the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations and the amount of $15,504,000 be appropriated from general taxation as recommended by the mayor and the finance subcommittee.
Second.
We have a motion that's been made and seconded concerning Section Three of the fiscal year 2013 budget, Schools, in the amount of $15,504,000 as recommended by the mayor and finance committee. Are there any further comments or questions? Counsel Psychowski.
Well, I've received about 11 phone calls and I was keeping track of it, maybe eight or nine others. People in the stores and downtown were talking to me. And they're very upset with the school budget because the schools are getting, the schools consuming 67% of the town budget. People out there can think, you know? And the other thing of it is, they also realize that the school is going for an override of about a million and a half. They said to me, what is this? A credit card mentality? Somebody has to make a stand here. Maybe they should be cut. So this evening, to support those people, because I think they have a very valid viewpoint, I know this motion will pass here. The motion will pass. But I'm going to abstain from the vote to support those people. Thank you.
Counsel Rist.
I just wanted to make the comment that we had a very good report from the superintendent of schools. This sum of money that is appropriated by the mayor is $680,000 rounded out short of what they needed for level services. What that means is they've had to cut a number of positions, teachers and paraprofessionals, as well as a number of other expenses in order to meet this budget number. Apparently Counsel Psychowski wants them to cut even further, but I don't agree. I just wanted the other counselors to know that this budget represents a large cut to their budget request and it will mean people are getting pink slips. It is, so I just wanted other counselors to know that we had a good meeting on the schools.
Counsel Winnie.
I'm going to, I'm going to throw my two cents into this whole budget proposal for the schools. I think that the mayor did a very good job and they are taking 67.3% of the total budget, which is well over half. And we have in the past done a very good job in supporting the schools. Unfortunately, all of the other departments have taken the hits over the last years since we've gone into the crisis mode. And we all know that the public services are going to be the last to come back from this recession. It will be the public that will come back first and it will be the private, it will be these, all of the public, state, federal and municipalities that are going to be last in the upswing in this reception, recession. But with that being said, I think that this is an appropriate use of the money and that the schools, just like everybody else in the city and in our households, unfortunately, we're going to all have to live within our budget, so.
Thank you. Any further comments? Counsel McCoy.
Yeah, and I believe, and I don't know the percentage, that by law, we have to fund the schools to a certain level, which I assume is probably by 60% or more. And I know we probably overfund slightly, but every budget, it gets closer and closer and closer. So although it sounds like a high percentage of our budget, a lot of that percentage is mandated by state law.
Counsel Hagan.
Just a clarification for Counsel McCoy. We do, if I understand, the finance director and the mayor during the discussions, we do fund it. There is a minimum. We do fund it a little bit above the minimum, but just for clarification. So we aren't at the minimum. We are a little above the minimum.
Any other comments? Kate, that said, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those objecting? Abstentions?
Abstention.
Noted. Counsel Hagan, Section Four.
Section Four, Public Works. Guess I'd see if the mayor has any thing he wants to say on public works.
Kate, anyone in the public who would like to come and speak to this section, please step forward and identify yourself. Seeing none?
Now, I'll make the following motion. I move that the city raise and appropriate the sum of $1,508,982.54 for the various departments listed under Section Four, Public Works. And that the amounts listed in the right-hand column of the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations and that the amount of $1,508,982.54 for public works, the sum of $429,354.71 be transferred from the enterprise revenue specifically as follows. Charges for the Water Enterprise, DPW Administration, $86,109.81. DPW Motor Fuel, $43,618.95. DPW Engineering, $22,030.56. DPW Highway, $73,811.46. And DPW Motor Repair, $12,356.99 for a total of $237,927.77 that will be charged from the Water Enterprise. The following charges will be from the Sewer Enterprise, DPW Administration, $86,109.81. DPW Motor Fuel, $31,563.47. DPW Engineering, $22,030.56. DPW Highway, $39,366.11. And DPW Motor Repair, $12,356.99 for a total of $191,426.94 from Sewer Enterprise. And further, that the amount of $2,500 be transferred from the Sale of Lots Fund and $2,600 from the Parking Fund and $1,074,527.83 be appropriated from general taxation as recommended by the mayor and the finance.
Kate, we have a motion that's been made and seconded concerning Section Four, Public Works, to recommend appropriation for the fiscal year 2013 budget, $1,508,982.54 as recommended by the mayor and finance committee. Are there any comments, questions from the city council? I'm going to go to Counsel Winnie this time.
Yeah, Counsel Hagan, could you please, for the general public's aspect, explain why we charge against the Water Enterprise Fund and the Sewer Enterprise Fund and why we do that?
Sure.
I think that might be helpful for a lot of people.
Again, and I don't know the specific, the mayor is, I understand the mayor and the finance director take a certain amount of the administration costs, the city costs for all those departments are borne both by the city, but a lot of it overlaps into public works, both in the sewer and water departments. And this represents what the mayor considers their share of the cost of the ongoing administration. So it's a combination of basically taking some of the city costs and putting it into the, you know, reducing it from the enterprise.
So, so the whole premise is to try to make the enterprise fund self-sufficient?
Self-sufficient as much as possible.
I understand that. A lot of people are looking at this saying, why are you taking money out of the, that's why.
To pay for the.
Correct.
Kate, Counsel Psychowski.
I just want to make one comment that I think this budget here, Public Works, is underfunded. That's all. Thank you.
Kate, any further comments or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? None? Motion passes. I believe this is your last one.
My last one? Section Five, Enterprises. In the mayor or public?
If there's anyone from the public would like to come forward to speak to the issue of Section Five, Enterprises, please step forward, state your name and address for the council. Seeing none with the mayor or is there any questions from the counselor for the mayor before we move this to motion?
Please do.
Seeing none? Counsel Hagan.
Okay, I'll make the following motion. I move that the city raise and appropriate the sum of $2,45,641.86 for the various departments listed under Section Five, Enterprises. And that the amounts listed in the right-hand column of the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations and that the amount of $2,45,641.86 for the enterprises, the following would be transferred from the enterprise revenue and retained earnings. Charges to Water Enterprise, $666,508.81. Charge to Sewer Enterprise, $1,304,133.5. And charge from retained earnings, superoperation, $75,000 as recommended by the mayor and the finance subcommittee.
Second.
We have a motion that's been made and seconded concerning Section Five, Enterprises of the fiscal year 2013 budget for the, to appropriate the sum of $2,45,641.86. Are there any further comments or questions for the counselor? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions or objections? None? I believe we're going to introduce Counsel McCoy to take on a couple of the next sections.
Counsel Rist.
Counsel Rist, I'm sorry.
Old habits.
Counsel Rist.
Yes, Section Six, Human Services funds the Board of Health, the Council on Aging, Veterans Benefits, et cetera. Is there any questions or any comment for the public or does the mayor want to, anyone have any questions for the mayor before I proceed? Okay. I therefore move that the city raise and appropriate the sum of $518,586.17 for the various departments listed under Section Six, Human Services. And that the amounts listed in the right-hand column of the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations and the amount of $518,586.17 be appropriated from general taxation as recommended by the mayor and the finance subcommittee.
Second.
We have a motion that's been made and seconded concerning Section Six of the fiscal year 2013 budget, Human Services, to recommend the appropriation of the sum of $518,000, excuse me, $518,586.17. Is there any further comments or questions for the counselor? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Motion passes. Counsel Rist.
Yes, Section Seven, Cultural and Recreation. This funds the Parks Department and the Recreation Department, the Library and the Community Center. Any questions or any comment for the mayor or the public? Have any comment?
Seeing none?
Okay, I'll move that the city raise and appropriate the sum of $519,098.40 for the various departments listed under Section Seven, Cultural and Recreation. And that the amounts listed in the right-hand column of the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations and that the amount of $195,577 listed under Item Number 6100 for the East Hampton Public Library, the sum of $10,000 be paid from the Emily Williston Library donation account. And the amount of $509,098.40 be appropriated from general taxation as recommended by the mayor and finance subcommittee.
Second.
We have a motion that's been made and seconded concerning Section Seven of the fiscal 2013 budget concerning Cultural and Recreation, to recommend and appropriate the sum of Are there any further questions or comments for the counselor? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or objections? Motion passes. Counsel Rist.
Section Eight, Debt and Interest. This is the department in which all of our debt and the interest therefore is categorized. Any comments from the mayor or any?
Any questions for the mayor?
Questions for the mayor, comments from the public, sorry.
Just actually, either Melissa or the mayor.
Counsel McCoy.
Yeah, if you could just summarize again what in this FY13 will either be coming off or adding to debt.
In 13, there's no funding for the Equidale CPA project. And that's it. That's the only thing that's falling off in 13. And that would have been CPA funded in the past two years. So it has no real impact on the general operating.
Okay, thank you.
With the.
The finance director reminded me that the money that we borrowed for the design and preparation for the high school project, it was a short-term note and that's coming off as well.
Thank you.
Of course, the cost of the project is on, so the net impact is an increase in the cost for that high school.
Counsel Psychowski, you have a question?
No, I just was giving her the victory side for reminding the mayor.
Okay. Any other counselors have any questions for the mayor? Anyone from the public? Kate, that said, Counsel Rist.
I move that the city raise and appropriate the sum of $2,347,444.82 for the various departments listed under Section Eight, Debt and Interest. And that the amounts listed in the right-hand column of the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations. And that the amount of $2,347,444.82 for debt and interest, the sum of $507,725.83 be transferred from enterprise revenue specifically as follows. Direct charges for Water Enterprise, maturing debt, $110,000. Interest, $47,795 for a total of $157,795. Direct charges for Sewer Enterprise, maturing debt, $254,969.66. And interest, $94,961.17 for a total of $349,930.83. And the sum of $71,913.99 be transferred from enterprise retained earnings specifically as follows. Maturing debt, $66,380.7. Interest, $5,533.92 for a grand total of $71,913.99. And the amount of $1,593,137.50 be paid from debt exclusion taxation, of which $5,478.82 will be paid from debt exclusion offset accounts. And the amount of $174,667.50 be appropriated from general taxation as recommended by the mayor and the finance subcommittee.
Second.
We have a motion that's been made and seconded concerning Section Eight, Fiscal Year 2013 Budget, Debt and Interest, to appropriate the sum of $2,347,444.82. Are there any comments or questions for the counselor? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? None. That said, I get to introduce the last two items, so I'll start with Section Nine, Employee Benefits. Before I actually read this, I'd like to ask if there's any questions from the public concerning this employee benefit sections. Seeing none? Are there any questions for the mayor, for the counselor? Do you have any questions for the mayor?
I just.
Or the finance director?
I just want clarification. These are employee benefits for all of the employees, including the school department.
That's correct.
Everybody.
So, yeah, so this, this section does cover employee benefits for all employees in all, in all funds. And so it does cover general fund and enterprise fund. General fund does include the school employees. And if you want a further breakdown of how much of this goes to the school employees, I would direct you to Section Three. The school budget, Page Two of that budget, has a breakdown of all of the employee benefit costs that are carried elsewhere in the budget that are attributable to education. That brings the total education budget up to something over $20 million, which is where that 67%, 67.3% comes from. But straightforward, all of our employee costs, all of our employee benefit costs are included in this section of the budget for all city employees.
Any questions or comments for the mayor? Okay, hearing none, I get to recognize myself and read this in the form of a motion. I have before me, Section Nine, Employee Benefits. I move the city raise and appropriate the sum of $6,850,200. I move the city raise and appropriate the sum of $6,850,267 for the various departments listed under Section Nine, Employee Benefits, and that the amounts listed in the right-hand column of the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations, and that of the amount of $6,850,267 for employee benefits, the sum of $553,353.95 be transferred from enterprise revenue specifically as follows. Excuse me. Charges for Water Enterprise: Contributory Retirement, $72,458. Workers' Compensation, $13,359. Medicare Contribution, $5,201.17. Chapter 32B Insurance, $57,665.16. Liability Insurance, $10,083.11, for a total of $158,776.98. Also, the charge for Sewer Enterprise: Contributory Retirement, $138,484. Workers' Compensation, $20,038.50. Medicare Contribution, $12,143.88. Chapter 32B Insurance, $143,965.92. Liability Insurance, $79,944.67, for a total of $394,576.97. And the amount of $6,296,913.5 be appropriated from general taxation as recommended by the mayor and finance committee. Any comments or questions for councilors on this? Seeing none?
I will second.
You will second, thank you. I was going to ask. So we have a motion on the table made and seconded, since we have no comments from the councilors. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Motion passes. The final one on our package for tonight, I will also read, this concerns Section Ten, Community Preservation. Are there any members from the public who would like to address the council on this section, or any questions for the mayor or the finance director? Okay, seeing none, I'll move, I'll make the following motion, this concerns Section Ten, Community Preservation. I move that the city council raise and appropriate the sum of $160,500 for Section Ten, Community Preservation, and that the amounts listed in the right-hand column of the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations, and the sum of $160,500 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund, Fund Number 24, as recommended by the mayor and the finance subcommittee. Are there any further questions or comments from the councilors? Seeing none? Looking for a second on this.
I didn't hear you.
Okay. That said, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? None?
Remove the public hearing, be closed.
Second.
Okay, that concludes our business for the night. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Follow.
Second.
You have a motion to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.